Ladies and gentlemen, we will open our regular meeting with a salute to the black.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, liberty and the other is the strong.
Madam Town Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Sam.
Counselor Lenick.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Maderas.
Here.
Counselor Durkey.
Here.
Counselor Carroll.
Here.
Counselor Wyman.
Here.
And Counselor Boland.
Present.
All present. As the case may be. And we will now hear the sweet dulcet tones of Mr. Boland as he reads the consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Waste Water Management Commission, Library Trustees, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Fogland Beach, Open Space Committee, and Substance Abuse Task Force. Correspondence response from building official regarding complaint received from Mr. Sylvia, 30 Ash Avenue concession standard for cash at school, received from Town of Barrington regarding question nine, affordable housing, received from the Town of Barrington regarding casino gambling, received from the Town of East Greenwich regarding casino gambling, received from Planning Board regarding review of major land development project, one mill redevelopment project, received from Rhode Island Ethics Commission regarding proposed municipal staff revolving door regulation, received from our Brown 325 State Avenue request streetlight at corner of State and Clement referred to Police Chief and DPW Director. Tax Assessor Dave Roberts requests approval of tax abatements, and the Tax Assessor requests release of carryforward funds from fiscal year 0506 for $520, account number 212-5287. Education and seminars. That's tonight's consent agenda.
Are there any corrections, withdrawals from the consent agenda?
I would just note that on the minutes, at least in my packet, there's a zoning board of review set of minutes that I don't see called out. We should at least add that to the list. Unless I'm the only one that had it.
No, I think we've got the zoning board. We can add that, and the minutes can so reflect. All those in favor of the consent agenda with that addition? Yes, you have motion?
Yes.
Second by Mrs. Or-- Mr. Carroll? We are all in agreement.
Two E, they may be taken off.
Two E, yes, it may be taken off. Belatedly, but off. Okay. The consent agenda has been reviewed, so Mr. Moniz, we can hear your comment on two E.
The subject of review of the major land development project, born mill redevelopment. In accordance with the Tiverton Land Development Subdivision Regulation and Article 22, low and moderate income housing of the town zoning ordinance, the attached low and moderate income housing comprehensive permit application submitted by the Armory Revival Company for the proposed born mill redevelopment project with plans and supplemental information for proposed born mill redevelopment master plan are provided for your review. The proposed born mill redevelopment is a major land development project consisting of seven buildings, two new and five renovated, containing 264 new residential loft units with 79 affordable housing units plus some 40,000 square feet of commercial space. The existing born mill site is about 19.9 plus or minus acres, is located in an industrial zoning district on the east side of State Avenue, north of Canaanica Street, a small portion extends into Cook Pond in Florida, Mass. If desired, an informal meeting to discuss this project and any attached issues may be arranged in a town hall at your request. Please contact me at the above number for a suitable date and time. The master plan public hearing has yet, had not yet been scheduled, but tentative dates for the initial meeting could be Wednesday, November 8, 2006, Thursday, November 9, 2006, or in December. The planning board review of the master plan and the public hearing are expected to be continued over more than one meeting, and your comments during this review would be appreciated. In the event no written comments are received prior to the conclusion of the master plan public hearing process, concurrence with the plans will be assumed and the planning board review slash approval process will proceed in accordance with the above regulations and state enabling legislation. And the distribution was to the building zoning official, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works Department, School Committee, School Department, Waste Water Management Commission, Planning Board, Legal Counsel, Town Administrator, Town Clerk without attachments, Town Council, Town Solicitor, and of Florida of Mass, Planning Department, Conservation Commission, Water Department, and Office of the Mayor, and also to the Armory Revival Company.
Thank you. And copies, of course, of that letter are available in the Town Clerk's office. Next item, as everybody will know, is the proposed amendment to non-conforming development has been continued, or the motion to continue to January 8 of 2007. So I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I think that before we entertain a motion to postpone that till January 8, there was a second component of that which we had advertised and wished to be heard, I think, sooner than January 8. And that was on the matter of the relief for--
Dimensional.
--dimensional relief where, I believe the language was that if the proposed addition did not create a further nonconformity, then there was not necessary to go for a variance.
Yes.
And I think we should hear that portion of that, and I have no problem with postponing the rest of that till January 8. That was not advertised?
No.
Now, that was never, that's the--
May I?
Yeah.
When that came up at the public hearing, that was the question, that that was, that was a new aspect of it, and then it was referred to actually the Town Administrator and the Town Solicitor regarding to see whether advertising was necessary, and I determined that because it was something significantly different than what had been put forth before, it needed to be re-advertized.
That discussion took place at that meeting, that we were supposed to advertise it, and we had 21 days to advertise it prior to tonight's meeting, so it could be taken up at tonight's meeting and voted on. And that was the vote we took, if you go back to our minutes, because the discussion came up when it came from the floor, although it was part of the nonconforming, you'd stated that it did not fit to what was already advertised, and I thought that our motion was to advertise that so we could vote on it this evening, and I thought--
Well, I'm sorry, that's not what we understood it, then. I guess it's our fault for not realizing that that's what you were looking for, the direct advertising. It was referred, what the motion said was referred for termination on the advertising.
I think, well, I think there's a way out, but I, I think Mr. Boland was right. We asked for a division, or the substance of the discussion was a division of the nonconforming that everybody now agrees that we continued, but that for a dimensional change that did not affect the--
Increase the nonconformity.
Exactly. That would be separated out, and, but not having heard the advertisement, perhaps what we can do is her that portion earlier than January 7. And that was in the original proposal that came from the zoning board.
The reason for that, the reason for that is the amount of work it places on the zoning board of review. We have more building permits being tied up because of the zoning changes we've made to zones and making our 15s, our 30s, so in most of these cases, it's a front yard setback, which, you know, can't be altered or, you know, shortened. So when somebody who built a house and they had 35 feet in the front yard, we changed the zone and made the current zoning 40 feet in the front yard, now they're nonconforming, and they need a variance in order to do something, you know, to get a building permit. And I think it's kind of ludicrous, and we're hearing more and more complaints from the citizens of, you know, the cost to do this. And we were trying to resolve this in as quick a fashion as we could, because it was a fairly simple issue of just stating that if the nonconformity did not increase, they could be issued a building permit, and--
Madam President.
Could I mention as well, I think we also were talking about splitting off and expediting, just changing the language so that variance was changed to special use permit, so that wasn't also tied up with the nonconforming part of it? If I remember correctly, we had talked about that as well.
We need, Madam President, it would have been difficult to make it for this meeting because we get so many, we want to make sure we have the right understanding before we run it in the newspaper. We would not have, we'd have a difficult time making it. I was just talking with Andy. We could schedule it for the meeting. I know it's, my understanding generally, the policy not to have much on the agenda the night of the swearing in, but we could put it on that agenda. If we do have a three-week, we have another four-week break. There's three Mondays--
Five Mondays in October, so we've got time enough to do it before the next meeting if we want it. We'll put it on the second meeting.
I have no problem with going to the second meeting in November, but it has to be done. I mean, these people are out there waiting. I mean, there's people, yeah, there's people who don't want to spend $3,000 for a survey and need to get these projects started, and we're tying them up because they literally have to get scheduled before the zoning board of review. And we're going to clean up their schedule and finally allow them to be able to handle some of the major issues they got, rather than handling all of those issues every month.
The original planning board submission, and I'm paraphrasing this, that came into us, said, "If the building expansion is independent of the dimensional nonconformity and otherwise meets the dimensional and area requirements of the district, such expansion shall be permitted by right." That's what you are referring to.
Yes.
And that is the, that is the issue that was meant to be broken out.
If that was in the original submission by the planning board and was advertised, then I don't see why, because we've always continued that public hearing, we have not.
It disappeared from the text. It wasn't the original, but then it disappeared with all the various drafts.
It was part of it, so I do think you have to break it out. So can we then have a motion that will, that portion will be--
Could we hear from Noel Berg before we make that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Since he probably drafted the thing.
What the planning board sent up to you a couple of weeks ago was Peter Rugiero's suggestion, which referred to the intensity. However, the last modification that I've seen is the June 2006 that Mr. Wyman and Ms. Ruda worked up. That excludes that it pertains only to nonresidential uses. So I'm not sure if that's going to change again, but I don't see how you can advertise something that hasn't been written to fit in with their proposed amendments.
Right.
Let me ask you this. Do you have objection if the language that we carve out for hearing the second meeting in November is what I just referred to in your original draft?
You're going to have to alter that June amendment, because I think it's section four, that says the following, it applies only to nonresidential uses. So you, somehow you're going to have to wedge in--
Right.
--and someone has to do that in order to advertise it and then vote on it. Well-- And I agree. It's a shame, these people now are spending lots of money to go before zoning to do something. They were just caught in a trap, and there must be hundreds, if not thousands, because we did our 15s from the tiny lots, then we made our 15, our 30, our 30 became our 60, and our 60s became our E. There's lots of people that don't need front yard setbacks. They want to put a side addition on, a fire stairway--
Right.
--deck in the back. That's ridiculous. So there is definitely inconsistency in what you've been working on.
See, the 625, 2006 draft had-- I think--
Well, let me get it, as part of section four, which excludes--
No, it was, it was B1.
Madam Chair, this was not on the agenda tonight. I don't have any of my paperwork with me. I'm wondering where we're proceeding here, but I have to object.
Well, I tried, and I made another mistake.
I appreciate that, Noel. I think it has to come after the January 7 meeting, is what you're saying, so that--
No, it's the night, section four--
Okay.
--says limited addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification by right and by special use permit for nonresidential uses. You're going to have to put something in here for residential use.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay. We should take the language that Madam President has, which refers to that, and create a section which says residential use, and get that into advertisement form so that it can be voted on at the second meeting in November.
I don't think that would be hard to do.
No, but to avoid the mistake--
No, it would be a separate advertisement.
A separate advertisement, creating a section for it, and with that language which clearly says for residential use, and--
Well, I have to ask a question, only because the, the night that we were on the agenda to do the presentation, that's when we discovered that that residential section was included in that. It had not been there before that.
Right. It was a surprise.
So I'd like to know how that got in there at that point in time, because it wasn't there any other time.
Honestly, it's always been there, it was in the--
But it wasn't part of the--
Wasn't part of ours, but--
Right.
Been there since I--
Yeah.
But it wasn't for the public--
Okay, but my, my point is, we have language here which clearly says for residential. We should advertise it as such and take that totally separate of what the January 8th we're going to be looking at, and fix the problem we have with the residential nonconformity when it is not increasing the nonconformity. And the language that Madam President just read will do that. That's the language that I'll propose that we advertise for the November, second meeting in November, is that language which will take that restriction away. Motion. I motion. I'll second that. On November 28. And we'll, I guess we'll ask the planning board to help put that language together. It's there. It's there.
Well, can I make a suggestion? Is that we ask our town solicitor--
Yes.
--to do it?
All right.
Because by the time the planning board, they can run it by planning board, but I think the town solicitor knows, at this point, the substance of what needed to be done.
Can we ask him now if he knows the substance of what needs to be done? Mr. Solicitor?
Yes and no.
Thank you and no thank you.
I will, I will try, I will put something together, and I'll run it by Mr. Berg, and hopefully there'll be a chance to have it through a passive planning board meeting before we advertise it, but--
Okay.
We'll, we'll try and get the, the language, the best guess of what we think everybody's looking for.
Could, could we amend the motion, Don, that if it's not ready for the second meeting in November, that we go to the first meeting in December with it in case there's a problem with the schedule? I'd like to, I'd like to leave the motion as to get it done for the 27th. Right. You know, I mean, that's--
Okay. If it slips, if it slips.
It slips, it slips.
Okay. Let's see, the motion has been made, there's a second to the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries, and, thank you. Yes.
I just want to clarify one thing. Is this applying to residential and nonresidential?
No, this is just applying to the residential.
Just residential.
The second, the second, the second component of that, I have no problem with making a motion to continue to January 8.
So just residential?
Yes, that one section, just clear that up.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. That was easy. And I'm moving, I'm moving that we continue the public hearing on the zoning amendment for the rest of the nonconforming development to the January 8 meeting.
Is your second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, and. Okay, we, Evelyn's drive-in is a continued matter, next item on--
Someone's here.
Yes, Mr. Bedeau?
Madam President and Counsel, you have in front of you something from the Tiverton Fire Department. The information was not gotten to the chief, I believe, until Friday, so it was not in your package. The chief is here also to comment, but I think the paragraph that is under the chief's memo is pretty self-explanatory.
I think the issue goes beyond that, and it's been brought to my attention, that the business is in an R80, which is not a permitted use, so he's a grandfathered, you know, nonconforming use, and someone questioned whether or not that adding an entertainment license would be an addition to that, which would need a variance. And I think we're going to have to ask the solicitor for an opinion on that, if the business is nonconforming, is that an expansion of the business in issuing an entertainment license?
Well, I just, the comment that we had in front of you was the issue was raised at the last minute, was this a nightclub?
Yes.
And we took, taken that issue and gotten that addressed. That's a separate issue that--
Yes.
Well, I think before we address the issue of that, we have to get back to the, the crux of the issue is whether or not a variance is needed because of the, the use as a nonpermitted use in an R80. And so he's grandfathered because a restaurant was there before, you know, it was R80. Now, when you expand a business, you're supposed to get a variance to do any expansion in nonconforming. This is one of the issues we're grappling with, I guess, on January 8, but in the meantime, we have to ask if that's considered an expansion, does he have to seek a variance before he can get a license?
I do not think that the entertainment license per se is an expansion under the zoning law.
Okay.
It's something that, it's, it's an accessory use to what he's doing. If he were adding more seats, that would be one thing. But he's, the entertainment, I don't think is something that, that changes the nature of the use or expands the nature of the use. I do think that's obviously something that the town council, in deciding in your discretion whether you want to grant the entertainment license or not, that's a factor you can consider, that this happens to be nonconforming in a residential zone, that's a factor that you consider separately in granting the entertainment license, but I don't think it's automatically an expansion--
Okay.
--of the use.
Thank you. Now we can continue with the Fire Department issue.
You have a copy of the Fire Department's Chief Lloyd's letter to the Town Council? Mr. Bedeau?
I wasn't given a letter.
Just to let you know that some of us just received this this evening ourselves, just to let you know that.
Chief, perhaps you can, why don't you take a chair and identify yourself?
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for my voice today, fighting a little something, so. We had waited, we had not heard from Mr. Bedeau on Friday. We had gotten in touch with them, they came in with a floor plan of what they were proposing to do on that. You should also have a copy of that floor plan, a copy of the letter from Marshal Murphy, who did the inspection, sat and talked with them about it, his recommendations, and then my cover letter to the council itself. Because he is moving some of the tables out to be able to put the performers in, we are asking that during that entertainment period, we reduce the occupancy to 37. The question that was raised when Mr. Bedeau last week, our last meeting, had stated about live entertainment. Excuse me. There's several, several sessions under the, under the law that would come in. The main one is that he does not derive the majority of his income from the entertainment itself, which brings him out of the nightclub. If he had gone into a nightclub, it would have been a more, much more stringent fire code. So as it is, his classification under the fire code would remain a restaurant.
But the state fire marshal is still recommending that he limit the entertainment to just two people.
That is correct, because of the size of the building, the number of persons that would be inside the establishment, so that we're not exceeding the overall number. With their seating arrangement, with fixed seating, that, that would change what their number of people would be. He is planning on moving out one of those tables, and in lack of an absolute plan for him as to how we were to do that, we at that time, to be able to give you an answer this evening, made some assumptions on our part, and were able to move some tables and such to give a designated floor plan, which would come up on a square footage per person, which reaches at 37.
And the 37 would include musicians, the staff, and the customers, the cooks, the waitstaff, everybody.
It would include those occupants that were there for it. The waitstaff, because they are moving, would not be considered part of that.
Thank you.
Could I just get clarification of a couple of things? In your initial plan, you were talking about doing, possibly having a tent, and I think we've pretty much talked about that that would not constitute indoor. Is that your understanding as well?
The only reason I put that in that, in that pamphlet is because my friend is an artist, and he wants to have an art show there. It had nothing to do with the music, but because it was brought up, that's why, it has nothing to do, there's, there's no correlation there. If I decide to put a tent up there, there'll be no music in the tent.
If this license were issued, if that would not be covered under this, that's, that's--
That's, I never thought that would, how it was going to be. What I, what I want is in the winter months, if we're going to stay open, to have some music for the customers to listen to.
The other question, maybe this is one for the solicitor, just, you were talking also possibly about doing rentals, and if you had a flyer that was talking about rentals.
The rental is, like I said, for, I have a friend that wants to do that. He wants to have an art show back there.
Well, I was just going to say, if the business is issued this license, if we're then to rent the facility out, would the person renting the facility also have access to be able to use that license to provide entertainment? They'll say yes and no?
No. If you're granting a license, you're granting the license to the establishment. If, if someone rents out the restaurant on the inside, for whatever reason, whatever, Rotary has their lunch there, and they want music, yes, they can use the entertainment license. Or if someone's having a birthday party, and they rent the whole place for an evening, they can have the entertainment pursuant to this license. If someone has something in a tent outside, if, and we won't even get to that question yet, but if, if it's legal to have something separate in a tent outside, that has nothing to do with this license, they would not be able to have any entertainment out in that tent. It's limited strictly to the building. But it would be okay if someone rented the whole building, they could do it. If it was someone actually operating, they can't have someone else run the restaurant with it, but if they're running the restaurant and they're just having a private party, they could use the entertainment license.
So as long as the renter complies with the restrictions that are placed on the initial license, they--
Right, which is why it's, it's the manager that obviously--
Brian, can I answer that?
The renter doesn't have any control, they're just the patron.
Yeah, exactly. It's all up to me, it has nothing to do with--
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure whether who to direct this question to, I don't know whether it be fire issue or a building official, but are we, if, if we approve this with the limit of two musicians and the capacity of 37, are we creating a mini bureaucratic nightmare of who's going to count and when? And is that the Fire Department? Is that the building official? Is that the Police Department?
It is the owner's responsibility. If we come in and we receive a complaint, and we come in and find that he is over, then he is fined appropriately.
And the other restriction, that is that there be no amplification as well?
That room wouldn't hold him.
That was in your plan, so--
Yeah, no, it's 15 by 20.
Yeah, that's what I-- Thanks.
Just some clarification. Chief, do you, do you issue, does the Fire Department issue, do we have to call the Police Department and do, issue the violation notice if there's more than 37 people?
The Fire Department would come in, they would do an actual head count.
And would you issue the, who would issue the violation notice?
Under our ordinance, I believe it would have to come through the state fire marshals, because we do not-- because we do not have that authority, kind of police would not have that authority, it would be under the state fire code that they would be cited, so we'd have to have one of the state marshals come down on our say-so. We would be the ones who would be filing the complaint with the state fire marshal, and then from there, they would cite them.
Okay, just wanted to make sure the council understood the process.
Process seems a little cumbersome to me.
Yeah, just to summarize, so, somebody has to, a citizen has to complain to you, then you send somebody down and count, and if there's more than 37, then you call somebody up at the state, and they come down, and by that time, if Mr. Biddo doesn't have a beard down to his knees, he gets a citation for exceeding...
Excuse me?
37. I'm referring in a facetious manner to how long this is all going to take, and I'm looking at it from your standpoint, that this is a little bit, as Madam President just said it.
I'm just looking for a guitar player.
Well, also unworkable, it's not just cumbersome, it's a Saturday night, and who's on duty at the state fire marshal's office?
They wouldn't necessarily have to come that night, we would file a written report with them, saying that we had gone in physically done a head count, and then they would cite it. But unfortunately, under our charter, the fire department does not have the enforcement authority to be able to cite that way.
May I ask, is that the same as it is in every public meeting building in town, whether it's a church, or I see up here, this one has 100, if there's 110 people in here, and I make a complaint to the fire department, then that complaint probably would be carried through tomorrow during regular business hours by the state fire marshal? Would that be correct?
At the point of the complaint, one of our marshals would have to come in, do a physical head count, and at the time, we would notify them, we would immediately remedy the situation right then and there, but a complaint would be filed with the state fire marshal's office, who would follow up on it.
Okay, so this thing about being cumbersome, I mean, this is a law in any public building or any public place, so I don't find it cumbersome in that way.
I think you see you would be followed correctly. I think you need to realize, and the chief correctly me wrong, there are several, there are members of the staff of the Tiverton Fire Department who are also deputized as deputy state fire marshals. So there is deputy state fire marshals on staff here, who, you know, can come in on a Saturday night, make the call, tell the people to leave, et cetera, and then it's just the formal notice of the violation is issued under that authority of the state fire marshal's office, rather than the local fire department. But the people are here in town on this department to enforce it.
That's correct, we have five marshals that are certified as marshals, and I've been one of those.
Thank you.
With your name and address, please.
Barbara Martin, Necro. I have a question on the zoning table, zoning uses. In all of the residential zones, a restaurant, not including entertainment, is not permitted. And then there's a subheading, too, a restaurant including entertainment is not included, not permitted. I guess I'm wondering about a license for a nonpermitted use in a residential zone, whether it's 30 or 80, up to 80. Perhaps we might be able to explain that?
Thank you. You notice that the town solicitor is busily looking at the provisions that you just cited. And if, Andy, you need more time on that issue, you know, I'm certainly prepared to grant it.
I think it might be helpful to discuss this with the zoning enforcement officer. I don't like to usurp his, it certainly is a question there. And part of it is answered, the fact there is, the Taverner nightclub is a whole different category, A and B, and the fire chief has indicated that it's not, that it doesn't fall under that nightclub thing. But there is also the sub one or two, and I guess I would like to see more research about what, about the specific question of where the sub designation makes a difference or not in the use.
I think, yes, this question will come up again, and we might as well have something in writing for future guidance. Does anybody disagree with that? So would it be appropriate to continue this matter until we do get something in writing
I would think so. It bothers me a little bit that we continue this again, because this doesn't seem like that big of a thing, but as I recall, the first two times we addressed the issue, there was no representative from the restaurant here, so we continued it at least twice as a courtesy to the partitioner, and I think, given the recent changes and tightening of all the fire codes and all the affairs going on around it, I think it would be prudent to make sure that we're sure of where we're going, and rather than run afoul of the new fire codes, which inadvertently could cause the business owner more aggravation and expense than we would really want to happen to him. So I think to be sure, I would move that we continue this until two weeks.
I think the next meeting, because it's actually three weeks, so we have a little bit more time than usual to respond to things, so.
So the swearing in after, what's the date after?
27th.
27th, November 27th.
By that time, all the newer entertainment licenses are...
We'll be dealing with more.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
I oppose.
One dissent, which is fine. Okay, moving on. We have some unfinished business, the town administrator. Go ahead.
You have in here pretty much what the ad will be looking at. I don't know, we plan on running this as an advertisement in the local weekly and probably the daily news, which covers us the most. I know that there was apparently some discussions, yes.
Is that it?
Yes. There was apparently some discussions that some had with the town clerk, when I was out of town for a couple of days. If there's anything else that you want, or that you want to take a position as a council to support all of the issues, that the council would like citizens, I don't know what you want to do other than that.
Well, you know, the council has been queried about the, on Channel 18, sort of endlessly.
I watched you live.
We've all gone around the table and taken various positions in conjunction with it. So rather than bore everybody to death, I almost think, if I can do a little, I don't think it's a commercial, but the Public Access Channel has a discussion by the council. We have been assured by Public Access and Cox that they will be running this throughout, up until, I won't say ad nauseam, but until the election. So perhaps we can just urge people to look at the Public Access Channel. Yes, go ahead.
What we have here is not, this is an actual ballot question, this is not the ad.
Some info I put in, but that's the actual ballot, but I have to, I'm somewhat disagree with you, Madam President. We have had people in the clerk's office asking, what are these questions? Where are they? What do they mean? What are we voting for? We've also handed out 109 mail ballots already, and people coming in every day to get provisional ballots, emergency ballots, they don't know what the questions mean. I don't think everyone watches Public Access. Some people do not watch it, but I can tell you that there were some seniors that are also concerned about this, and one in particular came in today, and she was, she doesn't know what we're talking about here. I think it's worthy of an ad in the paper at least, with the full explanation.
Okay.
And description.
Now, who was going to put that together?
You are? I don't have a problem working with the administrator to put them, but somebody's going to...
I thought you said you had the money in the, I thought you were looking for money.
I was looking for money, and I think you could find money for that.
I could have swore you said you had money. She's looking for money, that's what she's looking for.
Okay. But what happened at the last meeting is what's happening, the same thing with the advertising, it's not clear where the council's direction is going with this. I did distribute a copy of the ads that I had received.
You want specific instructions? Okay, put the ad in?
Put the ad in, okay.
Put the ad in.
And take it out of your account.
Second.
What paper could I ask, or papers?
It would be, I'm guessing...
I would be looking at the Daily News and the Secana Times, those are the two newspapers that pretty much now cover us.
The Newport Daily News and the Secana Times?
Secana Times.
Thank you. Just so the public knows what papers...
Have you circulated a draft to the council members, so that we can...
Do you want us to give a generic, I mean, a very, I don't want to get, I don't want to find myself getting myself in trouble, frankly, by...
Then let Nancy do it.
I'd be happy to help. I'd be happy to help put it in layman's terms, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, I can put it in layman's terms, but, I mean, the council has had, I think, as the council president has indicated, there have been various votes on various issues. The overall questions have been supported by the council, but the questions have not been unanimous by the council.
Okay.
And I know, I think question 10 is clearly the one question that I believe there was a, very much of a divided council. I think the council was unanimous. I believe in question 11, I can't recall, but I think it may also have been in question 12.
You know, I think though, and I understand your concern about getting in between council members, et cetera, which you don't want to be in, but I think it could be so phrased, the ad, that would say that if this motion passes, it would be the intent of the council to convene a charter commission to study the question and report those results to the populous townspeople for a vote. Certain members of the council, it may say, certain members of the council are advocating the replacement of the financial town meeting. Other members of the council, without naming, may support the study, but see merit in the retention of the, something as neutral as that.
I would try to take off the last part of what's your description and leave that...
Yeah.
Leave that. Last two sentences, just to add the period.
That's fine, I mean, I'm just...
Just explain the question, is all we're trying to do. We don't have to explain how it got there, or why, or who doesn't like it, or who does. It's there, and it's on the ballot, and just explain it.
Nancy and I will work on this tomorrow morning, and get this done, because I do agree with you, two senior citizens approached me today on question one, which is the one question that seemed to be raising, they're having a difficult time understanding it, what the purpose is.
Okay, then we won't scream and holler when you come up with the wrong answers.
And that ad can come out of Nancy's money.
Right, I second that.
Very good, thank you, Nancy. Thank you, administrator. Next is the town solicitor, this is a carryover item with regard to the request by Mr. Leary. And Mr. Soliciter, you wanted this carried over for your input.
Yes, well, I think you have my memo, and I had talked to Mr. Leary about it, but he had no advance notice, I guess he's not here tonight. I don't think he objects to this based upon my conversations with him. State laws such that they need to get their master plan approval from the planning board before they can proceed with the amendment to the council, so I would request that you table it, and that would allow them to come back and request it to be brought up from the table after they get their master plan approval from the planning board.
Motion to table.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. New business, Mr. Administrator.
Madam President and Counsel, you have before you here a request by the Police Pension Board, which I serve as a member, counselor and vice president of the council, Don Boland serves as the representative from the council, the police chief, the treasurer, James Amarantis, and the president of the police union, Rick Ruist, serve on this. We are asking for your, we unanimously approve this submitted to you, and asking for your approval of a trustee document. This is an update to one that was drafted 10 years ago. Mr. Waugh, as you can see in my explanation, is the attorney to the pension board who has drafted this language. It is more appropriate to the size, to the size of our pension, and the old document, frankly, had never been signed, because some of the previous pension board members had very grave concerns about the document, even though de facto, we were operating under this document. But here, the board, the trustees bring this with unanimous approval, and request your approval as the owners of the pension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have, now that we have motion, I have a few questions, Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
First, just a few, on page two, at the bottom, it talks about, is, three lines up, is a registered as an investment advisor under the laws of the state, and maintain a place of business in the state. Does that mean that if there is an investment manager in Boston that has a fantastic record, but doesn't maintain an office in Rhode Island, we can't retain them?
That's how I would deal.
Okay, isn't that a little restrictive, since Rhode Island is a relatively small place, and Boston is one of the financial hubs of the country?
Well, don't you have to read it with A?
Well, that's why I'm asking.
It would appear to me that A allows, if you're registered as an investment advisor under the federal act, then you're okay. The alternative to, if you're not registered as federal, then you have to, if you're only registered under Rhode Island, you've got to be, have a place in Rhode Island.
Okay, so my question still stands, if somebody in Boston isn't registered as a federal counselor and doesn't maintain an office, then we can't use him, which may or may not be okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I would read it that way, too.
Okay. Next, on page five, paragraph F, this seems to be rather old language, there's, and I'm not sure, there's no reference to exchange traded funds, or I think, as it's more properly referred to these days, exchange traded portfolios, it doesn't talk about real estate investment trusts, it doesn't talk about oil and natural gas trusts, sometimes known depletion trusts, repurchase agreements on federal paper, index funds. It seems that this was perhaps taken from some language that was written well before the current list of investment alternatives were developed, so...
Isn't there a sentence in there and says, and also in other investments?
Yes.
Other than life insurance? So basically, it allows you that in other investments that are, you know, I think that clarifies some of the issues you have, that it doesn't go broad enough, because by saying those are investments.
Well, the problem is, I'm not sure that everybody would agree that an exchange traded fund is an investment. That's, I mean, these are relatively new instruments, some of them, in the context of the financial world, are new. the financial world are new. They've been around for four or five years, which means they're new. But I raised the issue, but let me move on. That may, that may solve the problem. On page 12, one, two, three, four, five, six, six lines up from the bottom, well, actually, let me go up eight lines. "The trustee shall have no investment responsibility with respect to the assets subject to the investment responsibility of the investment manager, and shall have no duty to inquire into the direction of an investment manager or to solicit such direction." So that means that if we hire an investment manager, we can't ask them what they're doing or how they're doing?
No. I mean, it is up to the pension board to establish the investment policy versus having the investment manager if, you know, I'm trying to read it in, in sense of the whole paragraph, but I will tell you, it is, it is the responsibility of the pension board to establish investment policy versus the investment manager establishing, establishing, excuse me, investment policy, which is what has been done in the past. This is where the, and the board of trustees take that responsibility. And yes, just so everybody knows, we do meet now on a quarterly basis with our pension investment representatives, which at this time is the Bank of America. Before, we were only meeting once or twice a year, but since, over the last eight to nine months, the pension board itself has been meeting on a monthly basis and meeting with the Bank of America. I know of at least three or four meetings in that eight-month period with Bank of America directly. And it doesn't include a meeting that actually they have scheduled with me this Wednesday.
So we, under this, we can, the board, pension board can inquire?
Yes, it can inquire. In fact, we do get, and for everybody's knowledge too, we also get a monthly report on our investments by, by Bank of America, who is our current investment managers.
And then, then the last question I have is on the bottom of page 25, top of page 26, section 5.2, pair of B. I don't understand, because it says, "If a trustee votes contrary to a decision involving the fiduciary discretion of the trustees on the basis, then the decision is or would be unlawful, et cetera, et cetera, they can give notice, blah, blah, blah." Then there, it can be resolved at the same meeting or at a subsequent meeting if a majority of the trustees revote again and say, "We don't care that you think it's illegal, we, we approve it a second time." I think that's what that says, and I'm not quite sure what the point of that is.
The purpose is, there are five trustees, and we tried to give an example in there that if a trustee or more, but less than a majority disagreed that an action by the pension board, by the pension board's majority was unlawful, that they had a process to force the issue back in front of the pension board for further discussion. Or that if the pension board was taking an action that they felt could cause, not unlawful, but could cause potential grievous harm to the pension fund, they could force the board to reconsider its actions.
But if the board still had a majority vote that said, "We don't care that you, one member or two members think this is wrong, we're going to outvote you," then it's, goes into effect.
Well, the advantage that also is if the majority...
No, 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 no. Is, is my question correct?
Correct. But if, let me, let me...
So I don't understand if, if it's just a matter of the majority vote's going to prevail, which is okay by the way, but why do we go through this convoluted thing when the majority vote is going to inevitably prevail?
Because then the record, then the record is going to reflect the objection and you have to consider, because if you read further in there, "Trustee may not file a place," you know, "an objection in the record with respect to a particular decision if the trustee has previously waived the right to make an objection with request to the decision." So it's, it's, I think it's a protection of those people who serve on the board, who feel that they may fall under some, you know, if something was to go wrong with the fund, that someone would come and make claim against an individual, that individual can defend on the fact of his decision on the record that he thought that that particular decision was wrong or shouldn't be taken. And I think that it's, it's only for...
Any, any trustee could do that without this language. I mean, that's a right, being trustee, you can request your position to be reported. Anyway, that's, that's my questions, so.
The first vote can be just the majority, if you've got a quorum and the majority of members there. And the questioning is not just revoting with the same one, but the second time around has to be the majority vote of all the trustees that are in office. So you do have kind of a larger majority around the second time.
Assuming that the whole group isn't there.
Right.
Which normally, in, in credit to the board, normally they are there.
This is a sense as a process that Mr. Waugh put in there so that if board members had a way of demonstrating that if they felt the board was making a, the majority of the board was making a wrong decision, that they could clearly have their record, really clearly defined in the record. Yes, it may be a bureaucratic procedure, but it was the majority of the board felt that this was necessary as a way that if a, a particular board member felt he was being or she was being excluded, they had a way to make it very clear and on the record in a different way than sometimes minutes are recorded, that they felt there was a serious problem with the board's actions.
Also, I, I think that kind of deals a sort of shot across the bow.
Correct.
And if, if the majority said, "We're going to invest in the Derpy Hedge Fund," for example, and...
That would be illegal under this stuff.
But if, if, and somebody said, "Absolutely not, and please record," it may cause that majority to say, "Wait a minute." And of course, there are different trustees. We have the investment manager, we have the administrator, the treasurer, a council representative, and the police union. They would probably stop and say, "Well, maybe the Derpy Hedge Fund has got such a wonderful thing." Which of course it isn't, so.
But it also allows you, if someone is missing, to get that person to have another meeting where all the, the...
And thrash it up.
Right. Because that could make a difference, because somebody could add something to that. And, and, you know, you may have instances where two people are missing in a vote, which would leave three people, which you'd have a two-to-one vote, and somebody say, you know, "I really want to wait and make sure we have all five here," because then the vote could be three-to-two in the opposite direction. So that becomes that, it, it's just a tool to use, that you can't get a change to the investment policy because someone's missing at a meeting.
And I, I think Counselor Leonard did indicate, we do, we do have a good attendance policy on our, our board. And we also pretty much take the position, when we have an issue that potentially could be controversial, we want the full board to be there anyway. Though I would have to say overall, this has basically been processed. This will be the second, first phase of, of a three-phase process. The next one is to bring you an updated pension plan to reflect all the changes that have been made over the last 20 years. And also after that, we will probably be going forward and asking for an RFP and an RFQ to go out and test the market on investment fund managers.
Could I ask that if, when we, assuming we, the council does go out for a request for proposals, and it turns out that there is a really good fund manager up in Boston that would be precluded under the current language, that we could come back and amend this?
You have, you have the right, if you read this document, that the council has the right to amend with consultation of the pension board.
I understand it. I just want to go on the record, if you will allow me, to make sure that we don't just exclude all the investment managers in the city of Boston, which I will reiterate for the second time, is one of the financial investment capitals of the country. And it seems silly that we write a document that says, "You can't possibly," no, it's possible that you can't consider them.
I think that the document has left...
People have, I would think, unanimous support. If we find that...
Thank you, Madam President.
And I think you would have that of the pension board also. And I think the document is written so that when things come up in here that you see need to be changed, that the council does have that right. And it all it takes is a consultation. If the council came up with an idea, it seems to me, that with the document the way it is they presented to the pension board, we feel that this is necessary to have this trust agreement be more effective, the council can propose that in the same way and then vote upon it after consultation.
And, and that's one of the, the aspects that was changed in this, in this trust agreement, was a very clear way of amending the plan, which was not there before, because it clearly indicates this is the, the, this is the town council's pension, which they have responsible for, and they have appointed through a process by people to oversee that and to manage it to its fullest investment.
One ministerial question. Doesn't this need a signature page with signs, with signatures?
Yes, it'll have a signature page.
Fine. Perhaps the...
It, it may not come through when they print it out.
This may be a time when, as part of the motion, you should authorize either the vice president or the president of the council to sign on behalf of the town. So that could be incorporated in the motion.
Sure.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the document, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed, carries 6.1. Okay. Town Treasurer.
Madam President, I dumped out the treasurer's here. I spoke to him earlier, and he asked that this be scheduled for another meeting.
Motion to continue.
The session to continue.
Be in November.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. DPW Director, Mr. Webster.
I'm here on behalf of the Street Committee. As you recall, last July, approximately two months ago, we discussed the issue of Shore Road. At that time, we talked about having a survey of Shore Road by a surveyor who had, had not been down doing, performing work in that area. You have before you tonight a cost estimate from Commonwealth Engineers to perform a survey of the Shore Road in its present location and compare it to the 1893 layout of Shore Road, so that we can send that to Attorney Rogero, who has done the previous work on this matter. As you recall, Mr. Rogero said that we needed to have a survey, so we needed to truly determine where the road was in relation to that 1893 layout. So the Street Committee, there were three members present, voted three, three zero to forward this to the council, asking you to have the, authorize the expenditure of this money and that the town administrator find that money for the, for the survey work.
I guess the town administrator is trying to find the money.
We don't have money.
Well, let's hope he comes back soon with it.
Let's, let's give him a couple of minutes. Whose office is in the back?
We might start with passing the cup down this way.
He assesses offices that way, isn't he?
He'll be bad, I think. Maybe he may have been nervous, I don't know.
Madam President, can I just make mention for the record that since this agenda came out, I have, the clerk's office has received a few letters and correspondence and requests from some residents of Shore Road. I've informed them that that'll go on correspondence at your next meeting, that it, it wouldn't pertain to this particular decision. Okay, just for the record, they want you to know.
Nice try, Glenn.
There is no money. You spent it all. Lawyer fees no less than the last three months.
Okay, there goes the cup around the hall. So...
There, there is no money.
Well, we do have $34,000. If I'm reading the, the end of September budget report properly, there's $34,000 in the town council miscellaneous, AKA contingency fund.
We, Madam President, if the council wishes to do this, we will find the money in the budget. I, I don't want this to be an issue. Yes, we have some pressing issues on the budget, and not to pick on the town solicitor, legal fees is one of them. The same issue with, is with the, the trash hauling account that, that has a deficit, because the bid came in after the financial town meeting. But we will find the money if this is with the council's desires. It may be reducing something else, but we'll find the money.
Okay. So...
I'd like to make a motion to direct this, first of all, thank, and then to direct the Street Committee to, to move ahead with Commonwealth land surveyors on the survey of Shore Road.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, we'll settle the question, I'm sure. All those in...
I don't... My whole means.
I'm not...
I'm going to raise more questions.
Yeah.
This has been going on since 1634 or something. We'll raise more questions.
At least 1890 anyway.
All, all those in favor of the motion though, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Madam President, I can also take from your motion that I will have the authority to, that I will have the authority to transfer the funds without having to come back for your approval from these accounts if it's more than $2,000. Or am I going to need to bring that back to you?
Well, we, we need to know what account is coming.
I, I can... I'd like to make another motion, that if the town administrator deems necessary, he takes this money from the council contingency fund. It's the end of the year for us and the fund's still there, and this is an important...
It's not, it's not the end of the year.
It would be the end of your term, but it ain't...
It's only four months into the fiscal year.
God, they look so vicious when they get there. Ah! I knew that.
We always keep a clean one for this boss.
Buzz, you are entitled to a pumpkin.
I, I have to, but I am going to agree with Mr. Wyman. I think we should, I think we should just take the vote to take the money from the council contingency fund, because that's what it was established for. This is something that came up outside the parameters of our financial town meeting, which we, you know, did not have any awareness was going to take place, so therefore, that's a proper use of the council contingency fund. And I was so moved that that's where it comes from.
I will second that.
Donald says...
I second it.
When Donald says we take it from the contingency fund, that is big news. That is big news, but...
When I say it, it's a big joke, right?
Okay.
Just for the record.
There was a second to that motion. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand.
I'm going to vote for it.
And those of us who wish to faint, so, on our own time.
Are you in favor there, Ms....
I am. I'm just shocked, that's all. Chief Lloyd, chief.
Yes, Madam President, I request authorization under the Homeland Security monies to be able to purchase the last of the radios that...
Let me save you your voice. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
There is a question.
The question is perhaps even to speed it up, isn't G4 and G5 part and parcel of the same thing?
Yes, they are. They were just two separate items and I want to...
And isn't the overall purpose of this communication equipment intended to give us the ability to communicate with other communities in the region on a common channel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to combine the two.
There you go.
I'll second it. Is one of those for the president of the council for emergency purposes?
We can certainly make it that way. We can have her carry it with her at all times.
The, then I, I move, we approve both requests.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion has been made to approve both items four and five with regard from the Homeland Security monies. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boland.
Mr. Administrator.
Over the last few months, the Recreation Commission has...
Over the last few months, the Recreation Commission has been helping me work on a capital plan, and at the same time, you also know that there's a skateboard park that's being considered for development, and the location has been considered a skate, is the Bulgar Marsh Park. If anybody has been up to visit Bulgar Marsh Park, they know that it is a facility badly in need of renovation. The DEM has a rotating fund. This year, the monies are for the acquisition of parklands. The following year, it is for the acquisition or improvements of park space. The goal is, over the next few months, is to develop an RFP and an RFQ, which you will have an opportunity to review and approve, to have a proper survey of the property done so we can make sure we know where our boundaries are and where our playground equipment is located. But here tonight is to ask you to essentially approve of the concept, to move forward with this project, also to allow me and the Recreation Commission to locate, the Recreation Commission has indicated they are going to go out and solicit some private funds, but to fund this project, which will include a proper survey of the property and then the RFP to help pay for a professional landscape architect. We estimated that the cost right now, if the process is done in this fiscal year, to be between $15,000 to $20,000. The Recreation Commission proposes to take their share from private funds and any excess revenue they may have, where they didn't hire people this summer because it was rainouts, and that you would help supplement it out of the budget someplace. The goal is, obviously, to get and to get a $300,000 matching grant, so that we'd have $600,000 to invest in overhauling Bulgar Marsh Park, which also would include the construction of the skateboard park, which has been long requested. We would be using a part of those monies as the match, upgrade the bathrooms, upgrade parking, upgrade the basketball courts, upgrade the, the playground equipment up there, and to possibly look if there is enough land, maybe even locating another ball field up there. But this is the first phase of a multi-phase, so that tonight is kind of concept, to allow me to start developing an RFP, to get formal surveying costs for you to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second? The first step is to get an RFP, RFQ for the landscape architect, to put in a proposal to prepare a master plan for our recreation.
Correct.
Okay.
But the first step really is to approve the concept of even doing this, before we expend a lot of staff time in developing an RFP, RFQ, and going out and trying to get some surveying, you know, getting some surveying firms to give us some cost.
Now, we have received a grant for the Bulgar Marsh Recreation Area.
We have...
For improvements.
We have an $18,000 grant to improve the basketball courts. That was secured shortly after I came here.
And that is a matching grant?
That is a matching grant.
Okay. Now, I just have to get everything in the minutes.
I would add, nothing is being spent until we had, nothing plans on being spent, first of all, until the concept was approved by the council to go forward with it. If the council was agreeable at that point, get the survey done, which would get your approval, because it'd be an expenditure monies. Then also in the process, get the RFQ and RFP developed, and then after that is approved, submit a grant request from, to the state to submit, to make, move this project forward, with the idea that sometime in the spring of 2008, we would hopefully start seeing some type of construction.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the concept, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the request to ratify the deputy police chief contract. Please, we have copies of that.
I put a slightly corrected version, one is I put the agreement would be entered into the 24th day of October. We originally had it for November, the 11th. That, and I added that he had two personal days, and I kept on leaving that off the change, and I put that in. Other than that, there is no material change to his benefit package, other than that he is getting a 4% pay raise this year. This is kind of blending his old-style contract in with the new contract style that we're using.
Motion to approve the contract, the deputy chief.
Is there a second to that? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
On behalf of the deputy police chief, who's not here tonight because he had the confidence that you would approve the contract, I express his thanks.
Sorry, Chief, sorry on the phone.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to want to be dialed.
Just for the record, could the town clerk note that he was informed that this was on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Webster, you'd like a workshop?
Yes, please. You have the revisions that are being recommended by the committee to the sewers and sewage disposal ordinance, Appendix C, and we'd like to have a workshop to consider those.
We would like, I think, I'm speaking on Mr. Webster's behalf, we would like this earlier than later, and we do know that the holiday season is coming up, the new council's coming on board, but I think our goal was to try to schedule it. Obviously, we'd like to do it in November, but December, and you also know the Conservation Commission has some issues that they would like to get scheduled. We've tried to keep your calendar not heavy during the past month, month and a half. You've had enough on your plates as it is, but we do have some items that we need to get in front of you.
I haven't noticed that it's been a lot lighter.
Yes, I didn't notice either.
From our perspective...
Can I make a motion to, for a workshop during the...
We had three meetings last week.
First meeting of December, I believe it's the 13th, if I'm not mistaken.
Or to have it the week before, the first, let's say the first Monday in December 4th.
How much time do you think, Dave? I read it over. I didn't think it was going to be, I mean, I know it's a tough call, but...
Again, we tried to answer the questions that were raised before about, think what we went back for was actually the low-pressure systems.
Yep.
Right.
And, and we've got a recommendation that was included in this package that came from Beta Engineering and, or Beta Group. And again, it depends on what the council has for questions. We have added sections on the, on the bonds, having surety bonds to protect the town when systems go in by developers or those that need to extend the system. So, I don't know, I think, I'm sure that once we get into it, there'll be some questions. I don't, don't know that you really want to do it at a regular meeting, but that's up to you.
I'll amend my motion for the first Monday in December. Is that the 7th?
That's the 4th.
Fourth, December 4th for a workshop.
And we would be, if you have no problem scheduling the Conservation Commission with their issues that they had, one for the council to take a look at.
I'd as well.
And amend it with the Conservation Commission as well, so a workshop with wastewater and conservation on the December 4th at 7:00 PM. That's a motion.
That is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have your workshop. And don't go away, Mr. Webster, because you are up next.
Yes, you have a package with a recommendation to award the lease purchase financing for the new loader to All American Investment Group. The total payments to that company will be 1-7-3-4-4-0. Annual payments will be $33,860. The interest rate was 5.061. They were the low bid at the time of the bid opening. You will notice that somebody tried to amend their bid. I spoke with the town administrator. We agreed that it would not be proper to allow somebody to do that, and that other vendor has been advised of that as well.
And I did attend those bid openings, and that's correct. Why, I don't know about the after, but that was the winning bid, as stated.
We have the paperwork from All American. It was given to the town administrator today. There are sections there that need to be completed by the town solicitor. A section that's already been forwarded to the trust, and then between the town administrator and the town treasurer, the rest of the paperwork will have to be completed. We're hoping for the completion of all this work so that we can have a delivery of the loader this Friday.
The information has been, the solicitor's section was forwarded to him today, forwarded the information to the town treasurer. The question is, is who is really signing for this piece of equipment? Is the treasurer or is it the town administrator? And that's what we're going to work out between ourselves the next day or so.
Okay, I want to paint a motion.
I'll motion to award the bid for the financing of the front-end loader to All American Investment Group.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator.
We have one brief announcement this evening. On November the 4th, there is going to be an ECO depot here in Tiverton down at the landfill site. You have to make an appointment if you wish to bring materials to the depot of that day that's going to be held in town Tiverton, which is a Saturday, the first Saturday in November. You need to call the following number, 942-1430, extension 241. That's 942-1430, extension 241. And this is also going to be on our webpage for anybody who wants to get the information.
This is mostly to get rid of hazardous liquids, I assume?
Paints, solvents.
Paints, solvents. ECO depot, Dave, what is it?
Computers.
No, it's not. Hey, that's why I'm clarifying.
This is for hazardous waste. You do need to call for an appointment if you're going to avail yourself of this ECO depot. You have to call the, the number 942-1430, extension 241, to make an appointment. It's for things like, if you have oil-based paints, turpentine, fluorescent light bulbs, expired fire extinguishers. Motor oil is not, is not allowed. That comes to the DPW during our regular working hours. They do not want to see motor oil. They also do not want to see things like ammunition. They're not set up to take that. They will take propane tanks, but again, the residents must call for an appointment, and they received an assigned, they receive an assigned time to come in. They do not get out of their vehicle. Everything is removed from the vehicle for them.
It is a wonderfully efficient operation. They just open the back, take it all out, and you're on your way.
That's Rhode Island Resource Recovery does a good job with that. I was on the phone with them today. They're all set to go.
One other quick note is to remind everybody that the town will be observing Veterans Day, which falls on November the 11th, which is a Saturday. We will be observing it on Monday, November 13th. Town hall will be closed that day. There will be no council meeting that night. It'll be, the meeting will be on Tuesday, November the 14th at 7:00 PM. This, we follow the state holiday, which is going to be on Monday, so we will follow that procedure. I just want to remind everybody, we will be observing November Veterans Day on the 13th as per the state, following state.
Town Solicitor, you have any comments before we go into executive session?
No, thank you.
Thanks, no thanks. We are now ready for motion.
Motion to go into executive session under 4246-5A5, acquisition disposition of public property for the Open Space Commission.
Second?
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And to remain in executive session under 4246-5A5, acquisition or disposition of public property.
Second?
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And further stay under 4246-5A2, collective bargaining.
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And one more time, under 4246-5A2, litigation, three...
I know everybody's anxious to get out of here, but could you go quietly, because we are still in open session?
We're still filming quiet on the set, please. And to remain in the litigation, 4246-5A2, for Ned versus Tiverton, Guinness versus Tiverton, and New England Property Holding versus Tiverton.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. We are in executive session.